City of Elsworth planning board meeting for March 6, 2024. Can we have introductions, starting with Mark?
Mark Rich, board member.
Vince Messer, board member.
Nelson Gill, member.
John Delio, chair.
Rick Lyles, vice chair.
Mike Hangan, member.
John Calafano, member.
And staff introductions, please.
Matt Williams, city planner.
Laura Roberts, code enforcement.
Thomas Karen, fire inspector.
Elizabeth Folet, assistant city planner.
Okay, just briefly before we get to item number three, just to let the public know, I suspect some of you folks here for Beals Avenue, this is a sketch plan review, there's no decisions being made tonight. They're going to give a presentation, the planning board's going to ask a bunch of questions. At the end of that, there will be a public hearing if you have questions or comments of the board, staff, whatever, you'll be able to come up to the podium. There's still be at least two more meetings beyond this and considering this project, it could be more than two, but nothing, there's no votes tonight. Just a pledge of vote on Beals. Yeah, on Beals. So, item number three, sketch plan review for a major use site development and major subdivision entitled Beals Avenue.
You got adoption minutes?
Oh, adoption minutes, sorry. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
Still move.
Second.
On the paper? Thank you. Now, item three.
Just to clarify, Vincent, this John, you're not voting tonight because we have a full board, otherwise we have alternates.
But you're entitled to ask questions.
Please do participate.
No.
Not voting, but please do participate, ask questions.
Okay, back to item number three, sketch plan review for major use site development and major subdivision titled Beals Avenue Multi-Family Housing Development for applicant owner LB Elser LLC. Closest is to build a 36-unit condominium development comprised of two-story buildings, each building would have four or six units. The subject property is approximately 11.31-acre lot located at Beals Avenue, tax map 135, Lot 44, in the neighborhood zone of the district. Someone here representing the area. Could you state your names, please?
Sure, my name is Alina Watt with Head of Fine Engineering.
And my name is Gabe Tomasulo with Opal Architecture.
Okay, floors only.
As you said, the Beals Avenue Multi-Family Housing Development is development consisting of 36 condominium units located in four and six-unit buildings. And before I get talking about some of the technical aspects of the site development itself, Gabe can speak to the purpose and scope of the project itself.
Sure, so this is, as described, 36 condominium units, so units for sale. It's explicitly intended to be an affordable housing development, so 20 of those 36 units are deed restricted, affordable units. That deed restriction is a 15-year deed restriction.
Could they speak out, please?
Sorry.
Just move the mic. The mic does not amplify.
Okay, well, maybe it'll just, I'll do my best, I'm sorry. Anyway, I was saying this is, these are, two-thirds of those units are deed restricted affordable housing units under the main housing affordable homeownership program, that program has committed funding to this project. And that sets a price cap on those deed restricted units of $287,000 per unit. We have 20 two-bedroom units of roughly 1,000 square feet and 16 three-bedroom units of roughly 1,300 square feet. For those deed restricted units, there is an income cap for purchase of 120% of the area median income for family size. And there's also priority for first-time home buyers. So, speaking for what I understand to be the owner's intent, the goal is to provide stable, high-quality, affordable housing for people who live here year-round. The condominium agreements will stipulate that these are primary residences, not, no short-term rentals. Really trying to create just more supply of high-quality affordable housing for families in this area. And speaking briefly, about one additional aspect is that these will be exceptionally energy-efficient buildings using sustainable materials. That is the focus of our architecture practice and it is a project that we hope can be a leading project in developing affordable housing that meets cutting-edge sustainability standards. So that is another goal.
So, speaking to the site itself, access to the site would be located off Beals Avenue. The site itself is going to be, is in the process of being permitted with DEP for Natural Resource Protection Act and stormwater treatment. There are stormwater treatment measures provided on-site in the form of proprietary filter units and vegetated underdrained soil filters. The site development itself has gone through a traffic study and a copy of that report.
What's that, Roy?
Can't hear.
I apologize, I'm soft-spoken. The traffic study has been provided to the city a copy of it. It can, a lot of the information that we're going to be talking about or that perhaps will answer questions will be provided in the full planning board review application, which would be submitted after sketch plan review. So, happy to answer any questions that you might have now. We have done a lot of work on coordinating with utilities and getting feedback from the city through the planning office and code enforcement. And we're really looking forward to hearing your feedback and what other information you're looking for for this development.
One thing going forward, and I realize this is just sketch, but some of the information that you just gave us, which is good, like, you know, the number of two-bedroom units and number of three-bedroom units, how many square feet they are, price points, we'd like to see that. Somewhere in the description of the project, I mean, as much information as you can give us that we can see, that the public can see, just so we can make an informed decision. Do you have anything else before you turn it over? I'm sure we have all kinds of questions.
I know, and what other questions do you have? I could talk about it all day.
Well, I have a question, is there a difference in terms of how you plan things between subsidized units and the others?
Currently, no. We've designed two-bedroom units and three-bedroom units and there hasn't, there has been no discussion of any difference quantitatively or qualitatively between subsidized and non-subsidized units.
So, if I have a family that needs a subsidized unit and I need three bedrooms, I can get that, at least in theory?
Yes, my understanding of that is the intent of the public development.
You said there was an income cap for the subsidized units?
Yes, and I believe that's a stipulation of the, of the main housing program itself.
Probably, and my question is, do you know what that cap is roughly in today's dollars?
I do not know what the median incomes are for the Ellsworth area, but it is 120% of the median income for the family size, so. Someone more familiar than me with the demographic data might know.
Well, the median family income is like around $61,000.
I thought it was $68,000.
Which number?
Close.
Yeah, somewhere in the $60,000 range.
Yeah.
Okay, so 60, you say 120 of that? So that's 70-something, that would be the cap.
I believe you mentioned the cap was $287,000 per unit.
For the price, and the income cap to purchase the subsidized units is, is 120% of the median income.
Did you mention, I think you mentioned what the price would be for the subsidized units, did you mention what the price is anticipated to be for the non-subsidized units?
I think we're far enough out from construction that those units could be offered at market rate and I don't yet know what those market rates would be. So, 16 of the 36 units would be offered at market rate. And 20 are subsidized.
And also 20 are two-bedroom and 16 are three-bedroom?
That is right. We're sorry, two-thirds, so apologies, 24 are subsidized. And 12 are not subsidized.
You mentioned your interest in trying to make the project energy-efficient, clean. Are there any other things that you're going to do besides what you mentioned earlier, like, say, solar panels or what have you?
Sure, I can talk a little bit about the ways in which we are intending to make the project energy-efficient. Essentially, we're talking about implementing a very highly insulated and airtight building envelope with triple-blazed windows. I think for this development, it's roughly an R-40 wall, roughly an R-80 roof. And in conjunction with that, no prioritizing south-facing glazing, maximizing building orientation for future solar panels. I do not believe that solar panels are going to be installed by the condo development, but they would be available to be installed by owners. Wiring will be present for solar connections. And apologies, lost my thought there, but yes, the main, the main thrust of it is that, you know, we're, we're going to be using bio-based materials to create a super insulated building envelope that will reduce energy demand to a very low level such that most of the household energy demand will be able to be offset with solar panels on the roof.
And in the end, if I own a unit, you own a unit, I want to put panels on and you don't, doesn't matter?
I don't know how those agreements will be structured, that would get into the condominium documents, which will be provided by the owner in a later application. But I know it is the owner's intent to enable individual homeowners to take advantage of solar.
Thank you.
The street from where it connects to, this is the west end, from where it connects with Beal Avenue and then it comes into the development, that's not going to be given over to the city or anything, is that correct? That remains in the?
That's correct, I believe it's going to remain a private development from Beal Avenue.
From, from the intersection with Beal all the way in and through? Okay. I'm a little concerned about the, well, in terms of the build-out, you're doing that in three phases, like, the first line of houses, the second and the third, is that correct? Or did I make that up?
I believe the development is, is going to be phased according to the current funding plan.
Okay.
But I don't believe the exact buildings to be, the exact phasing of the individual buildings has been decided.
Okay, I thought, I thought that in the financing thing somewhere, it mentioned that the proceeds from the first, whatever it was.
I do believe that there is an intent to build
Okay.
some buildings earlier.
So I assume, and I assume that would be this pile, that pile, and the next pile, right? I mean, as opposed to some of this building and some of that building, right?
You'd assume, yeah, individual buildings will be completed, but I, again, I can't, I can't commit to a phasing plan because it has not been discussed.
I think what you're getting at, and I had this highlighted too, is the developer intends to use the proceeds of housing sales in the initial phases, continue developing in the future phases. And that goes on, so. How, how much, yeah. If you're depending on future phases for housing sales. Try to explain that a little, I mean, if, if sales are not successful, does a project stop?
I can't, I can't speak to the owner's detailed financing plans, but we can certainly include more detail on that in a future submission, if that's, that would be helpful.
And, and based on those paragraphs, that would certainly seem to be the outcome.
And, and the owner, you know, Mr. Black, he intended to be here, but he had a conflict, he had a historic committee meeting to be here.
Now, you know what, you can tell him next time.
That's right, but he, he did ask us to make his excuses and then he will be here at future planning board meetings to answer these questions.
So, one of the reasons why I asked that, though, is, is what does the, kind of the interim traffic circulation look like? Okay, so if it's the, if it's the first group of buildings that you get to, okay? You know, once those are ready for sale, and let's say they're sold so that you can do the other thing, you know, is all the road going to be built at one time? Or is the road going to be, you know, this section, this section, that section? And what does the interim circulation look like? Okay, so that's, did that make sense to you?
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
So, the other, I'm sorry?
Oh, sorry.
No, your turn.
Oh, no, I was just saying, so, in the, in next submission, just addressing phasing and internal circulation considerations, infrastructure, things like that.
Internal and interim circulation, okay? And, and, you know, I mean, I can't imagine, well, I don't know, I mean, I can imagine that you could build all the, all the roads in the first phase or not, but you need to figure that out and you need to let us know. The other thing, then, is that, you know, you kind of have a peculiar-looking, to me, circulation where you come in from Beal Street and you can either go straight ahead, I mean, this assumes that it's all built. Either go straight ahead down to the second or third bank of units, okay, or you turn right to the first bank, okay? But if you turn right, it's a one-way street all the way around that loop, okay? And then if you go straight on down to the, if you miss the turn, but want to go to the second one, you can't turn right down that loop because it's one-way out. It gets rather confusing is my point, okay? So, my question would be, why not make all the roads, because the, the third one over is two-way? Why not make them all two-way? That makes it more simple, obviously, there's a little more paving involved and there may or may not be, you know, setbacks or whatever, but it, but it seems in general that it would be better for the fire guys or whoever that if, if it was two-way, if they were all two-way. So, I'd like to see that if you, for whatever reason, feel the need that it has to be one-way, I really need to see an argument for that to be the case.
Understood.
Okay?
I would ask staff first, though, if it's, if it's, does a one-way street, can a one-way street be narrower than a two-way street?
For our purposes, yes, because of its, but I think fire can chime in too on whether or not. So, it depends on what's on the road, so if all these houses are, no, it has to be as wide as a two-way street. But the portion of the one-way road at the top where there are no houses could be narrower than a two-way street.
At the top, it's two-way?
No, on the, in the, the one-way street where there's a loop, at the top of the loop where there's no houses, that could be narrower than the two, than a two-way street, but if there's drives, like parking spots and houses on the one-way road, it has to be as wide as a two-way street.
Okay.
I think, I think the intent is to have the road be the same width around, I think we are showing it slightly narrower, but on the future submission, we're going to keep it the consistent width all the way around that loop.
Well, two-way makes a lot more sense.
Yeah.
Just because, okay, but the other thing is that there's going to be all kinds of, if you make it one-way, there's going to be all kinds of things with people using it as two-way. Okay, so if you, you know, live all the way around here, there's no way, really, that in general, you're going to go all that way when you can go zip-zip and into your driveway, right? So, there needs to be a more intuitive circulation pattern, I would say. And, and if they're already saying it's going to be the same width, then why not make it two-way?
I think it just makes sense, especially from the fire department's standpoint, because they're going to be dealing with turn-in radiuses and just for simplicity, it kind of sounds like all the streets should be two-way with whatever our standard calls for. I don't think you're saving a whole heck of a lot by having two one-way streets.
And we'll, and we'll definitely look, we'll look into that, I mean, the, the roads in here, we're considering this as, you know, access aisles serving parking for the housing, there's no through traffic through this development. And, and like I said, based on conversations we've had with the fire department and the, in the city, we are increasing the width of that turn section, that narrower section. But we absolutely, we're, we'll take a closer look at the circulation.
So, I want to add to that, as far as we're talking about the roads, one of the things that's required in chapter four and basically, Article Three deals, and we've done this in the past, is that you provide for us and for the fire department, a turning template of fire apparatus for all these turns.
Yeah.
That way, we know that they can make these corners because the radiuses of these may not be according to what they can accomplish. So, for in the future, when you come with a preliminary, we want to see a turning template for Ellsworth's fire apparatus, not somebody else's fire apparatus.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Rick, do you have, like, specific issues that you think are going to arise besides someone just getting confused and taking the right turn down a one-way?
Oh, I think, I think it's intuitively, I think it's counterintuitive, and I just don't think.
The inverse question, what problem are you trying to solve with the one-way traffic?
I can speak a little bit to that, just in the history, I believe the original intent was to make sure that we were building as little road as we could for stormwater purposes, for ecological purposes, minimize wetland impact on the site. We know we're really dense with buildings with impervious on the site, so we're trying to keep it as light as possible. I think, over time, we, as we integrated the City of Ellsworth's parking standards, those roads got wider anyway.
So, it sounds like maybe it's a leftover from an original theory.
Yeah, as it is now, if it's really wide enough for two-way, one-way versus two-way doesn't save you anything with respect to runoff or anything like that. I mean, the road's the road. The other thing, though, is that the, from the, from the Beal Street intersection, let's call it, all the way down to the development itself is pretty far and that's going to look like, I mean, I can imagine people thinking, well, that's a through street, it must go somewhere or whatever. So, you're going to have to pay a special attention to, to signage and that sort of stuff, okay, which are real, real detailed things. The other thing is that I suppose you might even consider having some sort of, and I just, I'm just thinking out loud here, you know, some sort of turnaround, you know, for the people that errantly do go down, they can get a turnaround before they get all the way down to the houses. I don't know. Again, it just seemed like a long way to go before, you know, before they had a chance to turn around, given that they made a mistake.
True, I think, yeah, I think there are some site constraints, there's a stream crossing and the, the property is narrow.
Yeah, and then, and then the signing, the signage becomes even more important, sure. That's it for me for the site plan.
So, a couple of things that, as I was reviewing this, and I believe, I've talked with the fire inspector, it was brought up concerning the buildings being sprinkled and the proper configuration of the underground utilities for those sprinklers in that the sprinkler system is, how would you say, can be off of the one line, but it needs to be separate from the domestic in that if you shut the domestic off, you're not shutting the sprinkler, or if you shut the sprinkler, you're not shutting the domestic. That needs to be shown on your plan.
Yep.
Especially when you're going to start doing underground utilities, you want to make sure the contractor knows that that has to be done. So, that's something I'd be looking for in the preliminary as well when we get ready to do that.
Okay, so, just to be clear, like, I mean, at the permit level, we don't typically show all details for construction, however, just clarifying the, the valid configuration for the sprinkler service.
Correct.
Okay, no problem.
Right, because I, as, looking at the plan, the sketch plan, it looks like you have two water lines going into each one, and I didn't know if one of those was a sprinkler or one of those was whatever. I was looking at C2 and I just wasn't sure what that was. Where the one water line went to one apartment and one went to the other, I wasn't exactly sure what was happening with that.
I think what's shown on the plan, and again, this is for sketch plan, we didn't show every single detail here. We are showing domestic services for each unit and then a building sprinkler service.
Okay, so that's what that is? Okay, so, that's fine, it just wasn't labeled as such, I just wasn't sure if that's what was being done, okay?
Yeah, we'll make sure it's clarified on the final submission.
The other thing that we were, I was looking at was two things in the application under new sprinkler systems being monitored by a fire alarm system, and it said to be determined. I'm not sure what that meant, but we, the ordinance does specifically state that it will be and shall be under Article Six of chapter four, that just as it was done at Shaw, at Straw Way, each system has its own monitoring system and notification system within the apartment building complex. So each unit has some sort of notification within it if the sprinkler system goes off in that, in that area. And looking at your, and I, I'm assuming, again, that this is probably just on the cost breakdown, it's just an estimate, for sure, under the electrical, whether you have included in that cost the cost of fire alarm systems.
I believe so.
Okay, so that'd be something to check on, just to be sure, if you don't sell yourself short with that. Could you talk a little bit about, it looks like the total development, construction cost, total development cost you stated right now is approximately $16.35 million. And then on the next page, excuse me, the total funding to initiate construction therefore is as follows and is five different funding at 8.15 million. So, if you get that 8.15 million, what exactly gets constructed?
I think that goes back to your former, previous question about phasing, and we'll provide more detail on that as part of a preliminary application.
Okay, I mean, what, this is kind of, I think you will admit this is kind of a complicated funding mechanism. Because obviously, one of them, I mean, you come around and say that the affordable housing TIF of 1.2 million needs to be introduced and is carried through the Ellsworth City Council after land use approvals are obtained. Obviously, we have nothing to do with the TIF. But it kind of sounds like if, I mean, they get too far ahead, but if, if the council doesn't prove that, does that cancel the whole project? Or maybe we're too new into the discussion to even.
That's a subject that, I mean, Mr. Black brought the call, he would have more information on it probably, but the Decanop Development Director and I have had the conversation with him to figure out what, if this doesn't go through, is the project still feasible with other funding?
I mean, the way they are looking at these amounts and the five different funding sources, are we going to have, the city going to have some other review to make sure that we think their funding is sufficient for the project? Like a peer review or?
I mean, I guess, so the planning board does have it within its power to request a third-party review of portions of a plan and so you could ask, we could look into a financial assessment of whether their funding plan is feasible enough. I would say the first step is just for preliminary, asking them to provide more information on it than prior to final, if you're still not satisfied with what's provided, asking for that third-party review.
Okay. And perhaps a little, I guess it's a letter from Atlantic Federal Credit Union. It talks about additional conditions on the second page, number two. Loan continued on 50% of the units pre-sold, could you talk a little bit about that?
I'm not qualified to speak on the owner's behalf because he was the one who's involved in that negotiation with the bank. But I believe we will be able to provide. Do you have a specific question that I can get an answer for you on related to that?
Well, I guess, you know, how does that impact the whole project? Is 50% of the units pre-sold, is that phase one to, to start the project? Or 50% of all the units or?
I mean, how does that tie into the-
It sounds like one thing that you, what you really need is clear indications in this financing statement of what need, what sort of, like, what are the project impacts of each of these funding sources coming to fruition? Is that correct?
And how does it sequence?
I mean, generally speaking, I mean, when we deal with a project, you know, we get a, dealing with one lender, we get a letter from that bank or whoever saying, this developer has sufficient financial capability to build this project. As you proceed, you know, because of the several different sources of funding, you know, is somebody going to be able to say, you know, Beale's Avenue LLC has the sufficient funding to go forward? I think that's crucial, that some financial institution tells us that you can afford it.
So it probably looks like some combination of where you have it start saying, funds have been secured, just proof that those funds are secured.
I mean, especially if you're facing funding, and I don't see anywhere in here, maybe you can tell, how much Atlantic Federal Credit Union is coming up for funds, but if they're saying fifty percent of the units have to, you know, pre-sold in order to get there for them, I don't see them listed in that page of the one point one five million.
Being neither qualified nor desiring to get into the legalese, I think the definition, subjective definition of funds have been secured is maybe what's up here. Funds with conditions others may not consider secured. They may consider them potential. That's maybe a concern.
And I mean, again, with the sequencing, you say fifty percent pre-sold, are we talking about fifty percent of phase one? Or are we talking about fifty percent of all of them? And so forth.
Yeah, and I'm sure probably some of these will be worked out between the developer and the credit union. However, the other issue is all financing and grant funding secured. Does that include the TIF from the city as well? That doesn't exist right at the moment?
That does not include that, so if you notice, the TIF does not say it's been secured.
So that's not part of the financing?
It is, or the goal is for it to be, I guess, for the developer. But to say it doesn't put it forward, again, the conversation we still have to have with the developers, what happens if that is not secured? Is there additional funding already available to them that will replace it? So the project will still move forward?
And I guess moving forward, I'll get back to the peer review. I think this is one area that we may, in my mind, we may very well ask for a peer review because it's so complicated. Just to give you a heads up. I never realized we still have a long ways to go, but.
I will say that I do know that the owner specializes in pursuing this kind of complex funding strategy. So he himself will be, would have, at a future meeting, be able to answer these questions in much more detail. So I apologize for not being up to his standard in that regard.
So we can pivot back to ground level for a little bit here. Explain to me the above-ground duplex pump station, responsibility for maintenance going forward.
Yep.
What about when one hundred percent of these units are sold? Who maintains that?
Yep. The, that's sewer pump lift station. It's intended to be privately operated for the life of the development. That's, it's not intended to be turned over to the city. It is connecting to the city sewer main at Beale's Avenue. And there is a tie, a connection to the city water district. The water district will be taken over by the, sorry, the water service will be taken over by the water district. But the maintenance of the sewer lift station will be part of the development itself.
And there's no rental aspect to this? Ultimately, the goal is to sell all of these units.
That's correct.
So there will come a time when there's no more income from this property. Is that correct?
Yes.
And at that time, the developer will simply continue to maintain these facilities at their cost.
Well, then there'd be an HOA. The HOA will be.
Okay.
That's correct.
And did you say the water lines within the property would be owned by the city or?
Yeah, the water service will become public and easements will be granted to the city.
Sewer is not.
The sewer is not.
Getting back to the HOA, I mean, I hope that will be a document that staff would review.
Yeah, they must have provided for further applications.
I guess I'll ask about the entrance traffic. I was planning to lead us there.
I can do that.
Does anyone on the board have any thoughts about the entrance to High Street to Beale's? I know that's an intersection I avoid for multiple reasons.
Well, I understand what's going to happen with the trail thing?
So with the city's expense, our planned expansion of the bike path trail or the multi-use trail, it's very likely, I was going to say very likely, but it's going to end up where High Street and Beale's Avenue, that entrance is closed, so the trail can cross and create pedestrian crossing there instead. So then that portion of High, you won't be able to enter on the Beale's Avenue off of High Street from that location.
And it's been talked about for some time.
Right.
And for a variety of contexts. So if that happens, okay, you're basically taking a whole bunch of traffic off of Beale Street, way more than you're adding with this development. So you take away a whole bunch and you put back a little bunch. And it basically, what this analysis shows is that it's operating pretty well in terms of intersection at Main Street. And, you know, the net effect is to make it even better.
I will add that just for public participation in that decision, there will be neighborhood meetings to go over that specific topic.
The, the-
The closure.
Yeah, right, no, I understand that. But good that you said it.
Yeah.
And the traffic study that was provided, that was done and provided to the city that looked at both scenarios where there is a connection from Beale Street to High Street and also the scenario where that connection is gone. So it does look at both scenarios with the proposed development.
I saw that. The only other comment that I would make, and I'm not sure exactly what you can do about this, okay, is that when I look at the vehicle counts that are contained in your part of the report and with a study that was done in 2019 by whoever did it, there is a pretty big gap, difference between those two. And yours being the lower numbers. And you might want to just check out those higher numbers to see what's happening. But again, you know, I'm personally, it would be good to double-check that. I'm personally convinced that if you close, if Beale Street becomes, or the Beale intersection with High becomes closed, then it's no good deal.
Okay. Yeah, the traffic study was done by a Sewell company and the engineer who did the report, she will be available at future planning board meetings to answer specific questions like that about the study itself, so.
I went through all hundreds of pages of it and I'm a better person for it.
I did too.
And you're a better person for it.
Twenty nineteen information Rick is referencing is-
I'm sorry?
Just clarifying, the twenty nineteen information referencing is the police department had a speed study done on Beale's Avenue.
Thank you.
Traffic count for that, so I can provide that to you.
And as you, as you look through that, if you, you know, the speed part of that study, the vehicle counts are the vehicle counts, okay? That's what you really need for the capacity study and all that. But the speed, the speed data taken from a speed trailer is not exactly an unbiased sample of vehicle speeds, given what happens when someone comes down and sees one and says, oh, you're going too fast. Just saying.
One other point on the police department traffic study, speed study, is their trailer was only tabulating speeds, cars headed north. It doesn't get the two-way traffic. And just one minor, in the traffic study on page eight, on the summary and recommendations, it says proposed condominiums with thirty-nine dwelling units. They just kind of changed that to thirty-six.
Well, I think they used thirty-nine throughout with all their generation. But again, if it's really thirty-six, all you are is on the, you know, you're taking a conservative look at it. And if by some chance you start to look at the 2019 study, okay, and there's data reports to be from Monday through Friday, okay, when you talk about average numbers of vehicles and so forth, only the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday data can be used in a straightforward fashion, okay? Just because of when the machines went off and on and so forth. And again, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that you need to redo all this analysis with the 2019 data, okay? But you should acknowledge it and, you know, think about it a little bit.
So just a clarification, and I don't think, I think it's just a mute point, but all the traffic information recognizes the road, Star Ball Road, not Union Street. Now, Star Ball Road is the extension of Union Street, from what I understand. And Union Street is the street that has the hospital and stuff on it. So I don't know if that needs to be corrected or whether it's an old map that they're using or what have you, or old data. But it's really, when you come off of, you come off of Beale's Avenue, you're looking at the intersection of Union Street and Main Street, not Star Ball Road.
Okay.
It took me a while to figure out that Star Ball Road didn't count in that particular area, so.
Question on page two of traffic volumes. The last paragraph, it talks about if there were any other developments that were, that had been approved outside of the traffic, outside of the study area. It says there are one hundred sixteen residential units approved on Eastwood Avenue. I mean, those haven't been approved.
No, they have not.
Okay, so I don't know if that makes any difference on the calculations or what.
I mean, if they want to consider them.
What's that?
If they want to consider them, then one might not hurt in case they do come back, but.
Yeah, I'm just saying that hasn't been approved, but.
I think that they were drawing on their, their previous study in the area. So they were using that information as part of the support.
And again, if those, if those units aren't legitimate to approve, it just makes, you know, it all better.
Right.
If you will.
They were looking at conservative approach to make sure that they were dealing with all the traffic that was potential.
Again, a note to that effect might be tidy, make it tidy.
And do you know, I mean, when, on page three, they have the average annual daily traffic, but with that only up to 2020? I don't know if 2023 MDOT data is available. But I mean, the paragraph below says, as I seen above, traffic volumes have generally been declining. But I think like in 2020, you're getting into the COVID period. And if the 2023 figures are available, it'd be nice to see those figures added.
Do we know if there's any 2023 data?
Not off the top of my head, but I know where I could check for it.
Any more questions? Do you have any more?
No, no, I'm pretty much done.
Pretty much.
Pretty much.
Pretty much.
Yeah, no, I'm done.
Mike, you?
I think I'm good for it.
Any other question?
Yeah, I do. This comes from the citizen comment that we heard or received a few days ago. And I just would like some clarification. This person talks about contamination in the area. And I've looked at the best I could do from Google Earth and all that kind of thing. And it looks like it's a pretty vacant lot. But the argument is that this area was a farmland and railroad yard, with large transload warehouse and open handling of bulk cars. It was a settlement basin for toxic wastes and from these uses. Any thoughts or comments about that? Have you explored that at all? Have you ever heard that before?
I'm not aware of the history of the slot, that particular history of the slot.
Richard Park's Gallery used to be the old train station right there. So that whole section right, right behind it, all that rail, it used to be rail yard backing through that area.
Okay.
I believe anything you say.
I mean, I don't think it would be a good, robust idea to put a development of this size on, that might be contaminated. And then you could explore that.
Wouldn't you, I don't disagree, but wouldn't you're checking with TER, DEQ, whatever it's called, I'm going to reveal that?
They may, I mean, some type of soil testing could also be done just to verify what is existing in the ground, in particular where the wetlands are. Probably where a lot of that's absorbed, so.
You may have to do some of that anyway, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that should resolve it, I hope.
We'll look into it, look into it with the information that we already have.
I'm sorry?
Well, we'll look into it, look into it with the information that we already have. We do have a natural resources report for the site. It might not deal specifically with those issues, but we can certainly dig a little deeper and see what we can find out about that particular concern.
Yeah, and you hadn't done any of that in this packet, right?
We did not address that particular issue in the sketch plan.
Well, I was just worried I missed it.
The other item that the gentleman mentions is under utilities about the water supply up there. It would behoove you to definitely, when you decide what sprinkler company is going to be used, to have the system tested or availability and pressure to accommodate your sprinkler systems up there. Because if it's insufficient, you may end up being surprised as to what you may have to do as far as the fire pump to supply water for sprinkler systems. So, and I believe it's the sprinkler system company that would do the testing independent of the water pump, in conjunction with the water department here in the city of Ellsworth.
We have had conversations with the water department, specifically about that question and investigating the pressure in the line. And we are well aware that, you know, the potential for some sort of a booster station might be needed in order to get the pressures required. But hopefully, there is enough pressure in the mains to serve the site for sprinkler and domestic.
You'll find out.
Yep, that's right, you will. And those details will be sorted through design, but obviously, we want to plan for it now at this phase.
Absolutely.
Well, another request I have going forward, going into the preliminary, I'd like to see what the buildings would look like, you know, building renditions, 3D, you know, something that's only going to, people can see, get a better idea than just, you know, a two-dimensional.
Footprint.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could provide that.
Yeah, I'll bet if you have an architect on staff, oh, wait.
Now, it looked like the site plan itself, it looked like the two end units, they're larger than the four in the middle.
The three-bedroom units are at the ends of the buildings.
Those are the three bedrooms and then the four in the middle.
That's correct. So the three-bedroom units have first floor bedrooms at the ends of the units.
And along with those renditions, floor plan of what the apartments would look like, the units would look like, not apartments, condos. Any other questions?
We have to do a public hearing.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, we'll open up the public hearing. If anybody has any questions or comments, first is open to city of Ellsworth residents, taxpayers, at least about the podium, state your name, where you live. It looks like Mr. P is anxious.
I have a question about the entrance to this project.
John, could you just state your name just for the record?
I'm sorry?
Could you just state your name, John?
I'm sorry, John Patridge. I live at eighty Beale's Avenue, which is the house on the far end, coming from Main Street end, just before you turn and you down over the tracks. If I understand this project correctly, the intent is to turn up Beale's Avenue from High Street and immediately after- crossing the tracks, taking a ninety-degree turn and go into this project. Is that correct?
If the city does not end up closing...
My...
If the, if the city does not end up closing the High Street entrance, that would still be a possibility for people, but again, the likelihood is that, that entrance will be closed.
Would it be possible to somehow get the volume turned up here, the speaker, for some of these folks, so we can hear what's going on? I know I can't. Roy spoke of the same thing. He couldn't, and I see some other heads over there, too. We're not hearing enough of what's going on here. This project does affect me, and I'd like to know more about it, and I'd like to be able to comment about it from all of this, I would like to...
The mics don't actually amplify sound, they just push towards our live stream recording, so we'll just have to speak up more, is the solution, yeah?
No, I'm still not getting it. I'm sorry, I know my hearing is bad, and I guess it's worse than I even realized it was.
So, John, I, I think there's, there's two options on the table. Right now, that turn is open, and if it's open when the project, if the project gets approved and, and when the project gets built, then yes, that would be a viable entrance. However, what, what Matthew is saying is, there are other plans unrelated to this project that may see that entrance closed, and if that happens, then it would not be an option. But right now, they are related but not coupled.
Right.
Yeah. So, the unfortunate answer is maybe. Unless the city closes that entrance, yes, that would be a viable entrance for this project.
So the city is considering closing it completely, is that correct?
In an unrelated conversation that has nothing to do with this project, correct, yes.
Well, as I say, I see it as a problem if, as it exists now, coming down Beals Avenue again, from Main Street, going towards the triangle, turning in that corner, and then immediately the tracks drop down to High Street. It's a, I guess, an extreme angle at that. I know at the time that it was, a few years ago, when it was discussed in this chamber, there was a question whether or not it was going to stay open, and there were a lot of folks that felt they'd like to see it stay open. I was one of them, and I, I was in the, I was the ambulance company for this town for forty-eight years, and we used that street a lot. Just not, not blasting up Beals Avenue, but instead of getting in those two lines of traffic down at the Main Street intersection, we'd quietly walk Beals Avenue and over to the hospital, and it was, it was great. My assumption is that currently the same thing is still going on, and same is probably true of other emergency vehicles, police and so on, going that way to, to beat that two lanes of traffic from that end of the fire end of Beals Avenue all the way to Main Street this summer, as you all know. So again, my, my concern is an entrance right there by the tracks. I don't think it's feasible. I think if, if this project goes forward, that entrance should be made off of High Street, for example, out behind Merrill Furniture, in that area, and, and go in from there rather than this project on the end of Beals Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's John G. I live at fifty-two Beals Avenue. So I had a couple of questions, because I can't understand a lot of it, like was talked about, but that's, that's my fault with hearing aids, I guess. So, so the traffic we already have now is a huge problem all summer long, you know, and I understand one of the reasons they want to keep it open is because if the traffic builds up on the Main Street, the ambulances can't get through there, so they can come up around, you know. I don't know how much of that's true, that's just my hearing. You know, I don't have a huge dog in a fight, because I've only been here three years, but the traffic is horrendous. The police department doesn't seem to do much about it as it is. I've seen one police officer in three years sit up there with, with radar. I walk my dogs two, three times a day, and, you know, I get horns honked at me, I get flipped off. Not very often, but it happens. And, and once in a while, it might be my fault, because the dog might get a little over, but the problem is, it's, it's there, you know. The other thing is with the, as far as with the construction, if it does, if the project does go through, you know, would it be a limited time for the traffic because of the, the noise? The other thing is the traffic impact study. I know somebody was out there, I think it was a year, year and a half ago, there was two people sitting out there in chairs, count cars in and out. That's a pretty simple, not very accurate way to do traffic. You know, usually they lay a line down, it counts the traffic in and out. You know, I don't know if, if, if that, or it could have something to do with the trail, I don't know. You know, because we get traffic both ways from the trail, the off-road stuff runs both ways, you know, on Beals Avenue. It doesn't go down the tracks. It does once it gets past us, but it, but it does go north and it does come down, you know, and there's a lot of senior citizens on, on it. The other thing is, the road's in terrible shape now, so if we're going to run a bunch of traffic up and down it, are they going to redo the road? Is a, is a sewer, because I couldn't, couldn't quite understand it, are they going to put their own sewer system in there with a plant, or are they going to hook it up to what's existing? And I don't see them running across a highway, I mean, maybe they could, or are they going to run it down Beals Avenue and the water down there? Because we already have problems. It's, it's probably one of the oldest parts of the city, you know, so are they going to replace all that if they do that? Because I, I, I didn't, I really didn't hear anything about it, and I know that they've talked about possibly an upgrade on the water treatment plant, because we already have problems. I mean, we just got a notice a while back about problems with the water, and that's like the third one in three years since I've been here. You know, it's a small community, we're way the hell up in, in the middle of Maine, our taxes are, are very high, and yet we have the problems with the water. So is this, is this going to just make it worse? You know, I mean, they're all, they're all concerns to me. We bought the house in twenty, stripped it out, re, redid it. I got more into it than, than it's worth right now, but it's an option to sell, which is on me, nobody else, but I like the little community, but I don't, I don't want to get into a, a big thing that I got constant traffic all the time. And I know they said, if they close the road, that it's not going to put much traffic in there for this unit. Well, you got thirty-six units, you can figure almost two cars per unit, you know, maybe not quite that much, but that's in and out all day, you know. I worked forty years as a mason, I own my own construction company, brown construction sites all my life, residential and commercial, and it takes its toll, you know. That's, that, and, that's just things I'm concerned about, you know. I hope some of it can be addressed, maybe some of it can't be, I don't know. I know there's got to be, I'm assuming this is like, I don't know, is this, is this low income, or what is affordable, I don't know, what does exactly affordable mean in the state of Maine, as far as affordable living? Does that, does that mean, is that seniors, or have they got a, they make only fifty thousand dollars a year, or is the state pay their rent, the feds pay it? How does that work? I don't, I don't understand what afford, maybe you can explain to me what affordable rent means, or affordable pay.
Why didn't you just answer that question?
Yeah, so for the purposes of this project, they're following HUD standards, the federal standards for affordable, which is if you make a hundred twenty percent or less of the...
Can you please speak up?
They're following HUD standards for federal, federal HUD standards for affordable, which means if you make a hundred twenty percent or less of the area median income for a family, you'll be able to buy one of these subsidized units. Again, there's also market rate units in here, so that could be bought by anybody. But so it's about six, I think we're like at sixty-eight thousand dollars was the median income for Hancock County or Ellsworth area. So if you make a hundred twenty percent of that or less, you could buy, purchase one of these units.
So it's basically federally subsidized?
Well, that's the standard. How the individual pays for it, I'm guessing it'd have to go through normal processes of purchasing property. It's, because it's not rentals, so it's all purchasing, so there may be programs that someone uses to buy it, they may buy it out of pocket, they may use traditional home loans, but that's not really covered by the seven...
I'd like, I'll add one point, too, and I'll preface this by saying I'm not an expert on these matters, but you still need to be able to afford the unit, right? So if your income is below a certain level, you are eligible to purchase one of these units at a quote-unquote discounted cost, but I believe what I'm hearing is that discounted cost is two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Okay. So, because I've heard some language referring to this as, what, what type of housing is it going to be? Well, I, I think based on what we're hearing today, it'll be housing that no one that cannot afford a two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar mortgage can move into.
Okay, that's, that's, all right. Because I guess I worry about, and I know it's, you know, not my backyard, you know, that little saying, but I worry about, you know, what our houses are worth, you know, because if it does become low income, and I guess my only issue there, tin hat thing, is if the federal government gets involved with stuff, you know, sometimes things, things change, you know, and I guess it's a concern. Thank you.
Sir, just a...
John? What's up?
I was just going to let you know, I mean, Matt's got a copy of a study that the police department did on Beals Avenue, as to how many cars go down the street and what their speed is, if you're concerned about...
Is that the one from twenty nineteen?
Yes.
That's, that's quite a few years ago.
You know, probably the traffic patterns have not changed much. I'm, I'm just saying that study's out there.
I think there's been quite a few, hasn't there been enough, quite a few people that have moved into the area since twenty nineteen?
I'm sure there has been some. I'm just saying that study was available for you to look at.
Okay, and I'm just saying that I think that there ought to be, you know, if they can afford all this, and there's the money they're talking about, they should be able to afford to put a, do a real traffic study.
They, they have to as part of their application.
It's my question.
Good evening. It's nice to see some of my old friends. I am a resident of Beals Avenue at number twenty-four. My name is Carol Spencer, and I have lived there ever since I moved to Maine, and I wanted to say that it's been a wonderful street. It's a wonderful bunch of neighbors. I've seen a lot of changes. Right now, when I first moved there, we had the Tapleys, and we had a Doctor's Row and so forth, but now I see five new families, children everywhere you go. My concern was the traffic element, again, also, that might occur with the, a new development, and the fact that if that entrance is closed, it will make more traffic on our street. The infrastructure of Beals Avenue right now is terrible. Our street is awful. In two thousand and eight, they mentioned that it would be repaved. Nothing has happened. I have had sewer problems, and I've had, it's cost me eight hundred dollars just for the December storm. I am retired for twenty-some years now from Main Coast Hospital as an RN. I know John Delio well, within projects I've done on youth access tobacco. I know a lot of people in this town. I've given almost everybody their flu vaccines in my work as an RN, and my public program at the hospital. I particularly am not foreseeing too much development in this area. I know our water system, our sewer system on that street can be a real problem. When I had to call the people to come and check my water that was seeping in from the December storm, which never happened before, because I was out of electric for eighteen hours, and my sewer, my se, sewer, yeah, my pump did not work, so in comes the water. With that, with some very foul smelling drainage. The person that I called to do this job said that they have a lot of problems on this street. They're called often for the sewer issue. So my big, you know, concern is getting the infrastructure of that street. That's a narrow street. I've had five Labrador Retrievers. I had a six-month-old killed right in front of my house with a girl, right, flying down that street after work one day. And I used to walk my dogs every night, every morning, and I'll tell you, it was a challenge. There even was a time when they wanted to remove half of the streetlights, and I was here and protested against that, because I, we need the light. Again, I'm concerned with your traffic problem, the, the infrastructure of this Beals Avenue itself. I love my street, I love the wildlife that I have there, also, which could be impacted, and I am concerned about the homeless development not too far away from it. That's another issue. I don't know, hopefully, if anything was ever built down there, it might get rid of that issue. It's not pleasant to walk the trail and worry about those things. I, I thank you for your time, and it's good to see you again.
Hi, I'm Rhonda Carter. I live at fifty-six Beals Avenue. I moved there three years ago, and the only reason that I moved there was because this was a sweet, quiet, nice neighborhood. I don't even think, there might possibly be thirty-six houses on the whole street, but I doubt it. And we're putting in thirty-six units? What's that going to do to the neighborhood? And I'm with Mr. Patridge. Can't they put a road in that goes somewhere down around Merrill Furniture or something like that? Why do they have to access Beals Avenue? We paid good money on there. We have a beautiful neighborhood. All of the neighbors are friendly and kind, and this, to me, is just, it's going to destroy the neighborhood. I mean, and frankly, I've already been, been in touch with a real estate agent, because if it's going to be what I think it's going to be, I don't want to live there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? We do have some remote. Somebody on remote that would like to make a comment?
Mark's working on it.
Okay.
Got it, Mark?
I think so. No?
Text board?
I'm clicking on her.
Go to the microphone.
I just wanted to ask a question. Did you all get a copy of this from Carl, Carl Brooks, so you've read this? He has some very good points in here, some that I've talked about tonight and others that I haven't. I think it's, it really is worth the consideration for each one of you to read it thoroughly and understand it before you make a decision on this project.
Yeah, we have received that, John, and so have the applicant. So, is there somebody on Zoom?
We should have somebody.
I'm unmuted.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. I submitted this paper to you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm so handicapped, I can't make a meeting in there, so I had to come on Zoom. And I submitted this paper, which John passed around to a number of people, and I, you know, certainly, obviously concur with, with things that are being said, but the most, what to me is the most important issue has not been, John, I addressed it partly, but it's really not, I don't think, come up as it should come up here. And that is, that this entrance to, their proposed driveway entrance to Beal Prom, Beals Avenue, has three strikes against it upfront. In the first place, and, well, in the first place, strikes against it are, it doesn't, it just, but safety-wise, it just doesn't make any sense. But it violates the Ellsworth code in three ways. Number one, that driveway has to have two hundred and fifty foot of visual sight distance in each direction, and that's from a vehicle that's ten feet back on, from the, from the road edge. It's less than a hundred feet to High Street entrance, and that, anybody come, stopped at that stop sign at the end of that driveway is not going to see somebody off of Beals Avenue until they're basically right in front of them, and the same thing, the Beals Avenue traffic cannot see people in that driveway. So, and you're just asking for trouble there. In the other direction, and this is something that people are ignoring, is even in the other direction, down Beals Avenue to Main Street, they don't have, that driveway does not have two hundred and fifty foot of visibility either. So there's two strikes against it there, and the third strike against it is that they have not... And the third strike against it is that they have not addressed the issue of the possibility that their railroad track may be moved back in order to accommodate this trail. And I want to emphasize something that's been said by some people, and not by the members of the Board, but we basically, the majority of people on Beals Avenue are vehemently opposed to closing of the high street entrance to Beals Avenue. And because of a number of reasons. John mentioned the ambulance trafficking through here in order to avoid, in order to get slowed, avoid getting slowed down by all the congestion backed up by Main Street. Also, we, of course, all use it coming back from the business district of High Street in order to avoid all the backup, the several light backup at Main Street, and have to drive all the extra mileage around to there and back. So, and by the way, we do use it as an exit too, since they cleaned up High Street, made it four lanes. It's probably as easy to get out, to make a left turn out of the High Street exit of Beals Avenue as it is to get out of Main Street. Because, don't forget, at Main Street, you don't even have 250-foot visibility on the left-hand side either. And that's a problem you're ignoring with sending all this traffic down to the Main Street exit. Because up the hill to the right, you've got plenty of visibility, but down the left, you can't even see the railroad tracks when you're 10 foot back from the stop sign there. So, we're opposed to closing the, closing the High Street entrance, and that we have filed that in writing with Jana Richards with respect to this trail project. We're much opposed to it. So I bring that up. And there's also a practical issue. Getting into that driveway off of that little crook in Beals Avenue is a problem for large trucks. And it looks like, no matter what they do, if somebody stopped at that stop sign, as they would be if an emergency vehicle's around flashing lights, then one of the large fire trucks would not be able to turn into the single lane of that driveway. And keep in mind that with a development like this, the first responder response by the fire department will be to send two of their largest trucks in. So there's a safety problem right there with that. And also, from a practical standpoint, Beals Avenue is weight restricted. So for building this thing, from a construction cost standpoint, you have to face that you can't get large construction trucks in here. You're gonna have to use a lot more small trucks. But the big issue here, and I think, to me, this is the major issue with this development, is that that exit of that driveway on the Beals Avenue is just so unsafe that they have to be looking for a better alternative. And as John mentioned, there are a number of alternatives on, to get to High Street or elsewhere. Maryland, the Maryland and the Hampton Inn Drive are, would be particularly good because they already have channelized traffic lights on High Street. Other alternatives would be in between there, of course, is the Abrams Ways, and you have Resort Way, and you have, in the other direction, you have the Camp Brown Road. All of those need to be looked at as alternative routes, because not only from a safety standpoint, but also they'd be better for utilities and also you could then be able to use larger construction trucks to get in there. And, okay, one thing I would support that was mentioned before is that there are continual problems up here on this street with the water problems. And we have ongoing fluctuation and pressure on the water line. And the water department pooh-poohs it as coming from somewhere else, but the problem is, we've got the problem. And as a result, that raises further questions about the ability to sustain permanent pressure to support sprinklers, and also each of those buildings will have to have its own fire hydrant too, don't forget that. So I think that's, I just add that in there. But I think the number one reason, number one problem is safety of this drive to Beals Avenue. And the only answer I see is to find a different driveway. And the best case would be to go directly out to High Street. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just so the folks know, just a, there's a lot of discussion of Beals Avenue being closed off. And that's something that the planning board cannot deal with. That's totally a city council discussion, which sounds like we'll be coming to a city council meeting, at which time you can certainly come and address that issue. We don't have any control whether Beals Avenue is shut off or not. That's totally the city council. So we're kind of waiting to see what the council's gonna do to exactly, you know, how this project can go forward. Any other, any members of the public want to speak their piece?
I just have one thing to add.
Could you come back up to the podium just so we can get your voice on the tape?
Oh, okay. I just think, I think there's been enough things spoken here, and there's other folks that are here that have the same concerns. And I think this really is a project that desires some close consideration and some options being looked at. I think it's important that, you know, it's not just a handful of folks that are not in my backyard. It's a real difficult situation the way it is now. And again, as has been said here, the only thing I can say is have that somewhere, have that entrance somewhere else. Because the number of units that will be put into this project will be as great as, if not greater, than all of the people on Beals Avenue. So how do you throw that in there? And, you know, and back, just extend Beals Avenue to do that. It needs a lot of consideration, I believe, not just tonight's meeting.
Anybody else? Then I will close the table here. Any other comments on the board, questions?
I mean, obviously, the entrance to and from this project, whether Beals Avenue is open or closed, you know, you've heard people mention about other access points. I mean, if you care to take a look at that, I mean, as you come back, I don't know what.
No, I mean, I can make an initial comment. I mean, obviously, we did consider other options. This property, the lot that the development is located on, the road frontage is on Beals Avenue. There, in order to connect to any of the other roads that have been discussed, we'd have to cross property that isn't owned by the owner. So, you know, it's not necessarily feasible. Most of the roads that were mentioned would also involve railroad crossings, which are inherently difficult and have safety considerations of their own. And then, you know, I think there is, you know, maybe one or two options that don't involve railroad crossing, but would require, you know, quarter of a mile of new road through property that isn't owned by the developer. So, I mean, they're not really feasible options. The connection on Beals Avenue is the most feasible for this property.
Thank you.
Just one sentence. I was not able to hear her. I spoke to somebody here next to me, the same thing. We needed, we had to go up to the speaker, and I don't know if the speaker worked anyway, but we had to go up there so everybody could hear what was being said. So we're not hearing what's being said at the time here.
So basically, as you said, that there's no other reasonable access to the property other than through what they proposed?
We don't consider that a reasonable access.
Oh, no, I understand. No, I understand. I understand that.
We'll provide more information though.
Okay. They're gonna provide more information, John. Any other questions? Any issues on staff? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Tracy, if you can hear us, you're up next.
Thank you, Thomas.
Yeah.
I don't know what was going on back there, but...
Oh, it's the cleaners. It's the cleaners. So she's got her kids at home. And I scared the crap out of him, because he sat there, and I was like, hey, you're echoing through the door, and his face was like, oh. I'm like, it's all good, it's all good, just letting you know. It's just like, it travels through there. It's very...
Are you turning off the lights, John, as a hint to, sort of deliberation? We're doing the big one right now. Which one? Oh, yeah. Item number four, final plan review of a major use site development and major subdivision entitled Old Mill Property Development for applicant Tim Stone and owner Arbor House Properties LLC. The proposal is to create a 17-lot major subdivision. Phases two to four of the project will consist of 12 dwelling units and the remaining construction of the roadways. The subject property is approximately 29.9-acre lot located at 30 Old Mill Road, tax map 41, Lot 53, in the neighborhood, limited residential and urban zoning districts. Someone here representing the applicant?
Tim Stone is here, representing himself.
Okay.
And there's someone on Zoom as well.
Okay.
Tracy, you want to...
Hi. Yes, Tracy Daniels here from Graham Engineering.
Okay, thank you. Take it away, Tim.
Tracy, you want to start us out?
Yes. So this is a project that you've seen a few times now. Phase one was approved last June, so we have phases two through four today. It said this is a property development for vacation rentals with some small dwellings. The goal with this is to preserve the natural environment on the site as much as possible. So to that end, we're avoiding wetlands when we can, reusing old road beds, and trying to avoid cutting down any trees, but especially the older, larger trees. We have applied for state permits, a few under the Natural Resources Protection Act. There's a Tier One permit with the state for the wetland disturbance, as well as a permit by rule for those two open bottom culverts over the street crossings. In addition to that, there's a stormwater permit and with the state as well.
Was that it, or did she disappear?
I mean, we could say a lot more. We feel like we've said it before many times to you guys. I don't know if you guys have questions that might help us.
We've got a couple new members, so maybe if you could just skip ahead to the chapter of phase one, moving on to phase two and what the enhancements are gonna be, maybe a thumbnail there?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. So phase two, we're gonna hopefully be able to put in, well, phase one, we're putting in two cabins and two treehouses. And then the next two phases, we're gonna try to finish that out with 16 total. So it's gonna be, the rest will all be treehouses, so 11 more treehouses.
And the first couple are under construction now?
They're under construction right now. That is correct.
Excuse me, please. I'm one of the new guys. What is it? I know when I was a kid what a treehouse is, but in this context...
Yes. So in this context, just think of a house that's up in the air. So it's on piers, it's not into trees.
Yeah, literally.
Literally, up in the air. So you get a good view of the river, a good view of the trees around you. And they're very tiny. They're 400 to 500 square feet. And they'll be luxury treehouses rented out, hopefully, year-round.
I'm sorry, say that last word again.
So they're like luxury treehouses, and hopefully rented out year-round. So they're like a normal house.
I remember as well, this whole project is, since I'm new to this, is a rental project? Or these are actually, some of these are for purchase?
None of these are for purchase. This is a short-term rental project. We didn't want to come into town in Ellsworth and buy up houses. And we wanted to start from scratch and build them new, for, I think, obvious reasons for this board.
And what had we decided, you decided, as to what, what's the definition of a short term? What are you looking at for rental periods? Maximum, minimum? What, I guess what would be the maximum amount of time somebody could rent it?
I think that's regulated by the state. I don't remember exactly, but I think it's something like 30 days is the maximum.
Yeah, for lodging like this, I believe, is 30 days.
But nonetheless, you expect to rent it year-round?
Yes, as short-term rentals, though.
Right, yeah, yeah, no, I get that, yeah. A bunch of 30s.
Well, that'd be great, but usually people stay for a lot less time.
Okay. And long-term, was there a plan for some of these to be bigger houses?
The last two hopefully will be a little bit larger. But we really have to see where we're at in terms of budget and everything else at that point.
And that being in the last phase, okay. Another, I mean, phases two to four, exactly what we reviewed before. I mean, nothing about that has changed.
Well, others...
Other than maybe the stone bridge?
Well, yeah, well, that has changed. So, but in theory, technically, you've only reviewed two through four in preliminary, so it's worth giving them the final review. But the right to develop is largely the same. The previously designated rock bridge is no longer a rock bridge, because it was just not feasible to turn the rock bridge into a usable travel path. So it's being filled in with the normal roadbed, and then it'll be like a normal road crossing with a culvert underneath.
Okay, so, I mean, basically, you're using where the rock bridge was for a new road, so to speak?
Yes. We just want to minimize wetland impacts, and it's close to the river, so we want to use the old road as much as possible.
Now, at one point, when you were gonna use the rock bridge, that was narrower. Fire department had a concern with it, so is the semi-rock bridge road now the full length, full width? Or is it still narrower?
It's still narrower to minimize wetland impacts and the other impacts. And I believe that was still, because it's so, it's a small section of the road, that was okay with the fire department as far as...
That was my question, and that's okay.
Yeah, he has. He has put a request in under NFPA Chapter 18, under the exception there, system says that the HJ can reduce the size of the road if required. And that's what they have done. They have asked for that, and Chief is okay with it, for just the bridge. The rest of the road will remain...
So it's still a narrow bridge is the point?
Yeah.
And that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're saying the rest of the road will remain?
Yes.
So the waiver that I...
So the waiver that I see here that they've asked for, they're asking for to have an 18-foot wide section and two-foot wide shoulders instead of 20-foot. That's this letter that I'm seeing here.
I believe that's for the bridge only.
From the conversations that we had was, it was for the bridge only.
Okay, so it says here, I'm making a formal request for a waiver from the city of Ellsworth. Requirements for private streets to have an 18-foot wide road section and two-foot wide shoulders for the section of the proposed road associated with the property.
So if you go up to where it's referencing, it says Old Mill Road Property Development Bridge with waiver request.
I said, if you finish that sentence, Mike, it just says, associated with the Old Mill Road property that will replace the existing rock bridge.
It wouldn't be the rest of the development. It'll all be according.
The rest meets the 20-foot wide.
So we're saying it's just the road?
Yes, it's just the letters.
Just the bridge.
Just the bridge.
Or, excuse me, just the bridge.
Right, correct.
Okay, I'm a little confused with the wording of that.
I got it.
I'm glad you did, but I did not. So the issue is, we're looking at just the bridge is 18-foot. Why would you have shoulders on a bridge?
I think that's required. I mean, we can't just, you can't just go straight off the edge.
I guess I'd like to see a detail of that.
Surely there must be one.
Yeah.
So that, that section will, it will just be essentially a raised section of road going over a culvert. There will be, um, guardrails on either side. And that's really what the, I think the area that the shoulder is for is to hold those guardrails just over that short section where it crosses the stream.
Okay. You all right with that?
Yes.
Okay.
The last two units, the way back.
Yeah.
If I saw this correctly, the road that gets to those last two units can flood, a 100-year flood? If they're in, are they within, I think...
I'd have to look at the map again.
That they're within the 100-year flood.
Maybe Tracy...
The houses aren't. I mean, the houses are not in the flood plain, but the, but the, but the road seems to be.
Yeah, there's a section of road is a 100-year flood plain?
Uh, yes, that's correct. A short, short section of road is within the 100-year flood plain.
So what we're saying is that if we have a 100-year flood, perish the thought that, that those people would be ruined back there for the duration of the flood. Is that pretty close?
It should, it should maybe be easy to walk out if they needed to walk out, maybe not drive out.
Thank you so much. I depend on personally on the car to make large movements, but that's okay. Anyway, I think you need to address that some way to make sure that that's okay with, you know, with fire access or whatever. You know, I mean, I don't know what the depth of the water is. I mean, it could be the 100-year flood, but it's a foot deep. Or whether it's a 100-year flood that is five feet deep.
We don't usually require that people provide, like, the depth of a flood and how well...
Well, well, you know, but we normally provide that they should be able to get to their house as opposed to going through a flooded area, right?
And other than once every 100 years, I think they can.
Says the non-believer in climate change, right? I don't know. It strikes me as strange that part of the road goes through the 100-year flood like without, kind of without comment, so. Make sure, I would make sure that that meets with not only our requirements or whatever that, whatever other requirements that might, might be there. The other thing is that that, the 100-year flood is controlled by the dams upstream and downstream. So, you know, I know that my street floods, you know, and it's less than a 100-year flood, but I have another way out.
I think, I mean, the recent storm was the highest, at least the neighbors had seen it in 30 years.
Okay, that would be a 30-year storm then?
It wasn't anywhere close to where that road will be.
You know, I would just suggest if that is a particular concern of yours, that, that maybe there's just some type of operation document that can be drafted up that in the event of expected precipitation to cause flooding, then these two units will be shut down.
Well, but the other, but the other thing is, you know, is, is there some regulation regarding wetlands and whatever even, that says that you, you know, you have to be careful of that, right? Because, you know, normally you wouldn't build a house at 100-year flood, right? Flood plain?
Right, the roads are... What?
We're gonna be up on the stones.
Right, we're...
Oh, no, the house is not a problem. The house is not a problem.
In our ordinance, there's nothing about that, and this project is going through DEP.
Okay.
And also, they're applying for a flood plain permit, too.
And it'll, when, if they apply for that, they'll have to note that there's a road that goes through that.
That's the reason they're applying for it, is because the road goes through it.
Answer to your question, right? Okay. So if they get that permit, they're good?
Yep.
Okay. I'm happy now. Wasn't hard.
It may be relevant if it's a, I don't want to joke aside about the depth of the, depth of the stream there or whatnot, but whether it's a convenience issue or a safety issue. And for me, I get biased a little bit by the fact that it's short-term rental. So for me, because it's short-term rental, I feel like it's more of a convenience issue as opposed to if it's a, if it was a permanent household, I feel like, well, okay, maybe this is getting into more of a safety conversation. Because again, a short-term rental, if you have an inconvenient exit, you just exit. You're never gonna go back. But if it's your home, it's, that's more of a long-term problem. So just humoring me, what are we talking about in this stream? A foot, two feet? What, like, what, how, how big are we talking about?
I, I don't know. I'm not sure how we would get that exact measurement.
Do you just mean the normal, like, flow of the stream, not a 100-year flood?
Well, you know, you know what the elevation of the 100, of, you know, the top of the elevation of a 100-year flood is, and you know what the land is, and so you know how deep it is.
Yeah, I'm looking that up right now to see if I can give you a number.
Could I wait across in galoshes?
In galoshes?
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 You want to have galoshes?
Waiters, maybe.
Sorry, I didn't mean for this to be such a huge contentious issue. I just like people to be dry.
And now keep in mind, if Brookfield doesn't get their dams re-licensed, you may not have to worry about it.
That's true. That's true. That's true.
This is true.
Both of the dams will be gone.
That's right. Get a 100-year rock.
One other question I had on the TRT report, the waivers requested was for the width of the rock bridge of the road there, but also restricted with an exception to the paving schedule until more than 50 ADT is, is reached.
Right.
And then what's the exemption from the Ellsworth stormwater standards found in that section?
Sorry, I did outline that before, but it was, you have to meet the specific standards for... Let me find the letter, because that's what I think. But, oh, actually, I want you to...
Can I ask a question while he's looking? How many units are on the other side of the rock bridge?
Two.
Okay. So 50 ADT is not ever gonna be reached?
No, so for the whole development it will? And I guess it's worth discussing the timetable we just talked about for the paving of the necessary portion.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. Yeah.
It was probably like, by the end of the summer, or was, we had discussed it. I don't remember what the answer was.
Um, well, there's a lot of things in motion, but the goal would be to get the infrastructure done over the summer and in the fall. And as soon as the infrastructure is done, we're gonna pave it. It just is a matter of trying to not pave it before we have all the heavy, all the heavy trucks coming in and out.
I misunderstood.
That's really the goal of the waiver. Because they'll just destroy it if they come in right on top of it.
So you'd actually be, I mean, the rest of the houses that are gonna be built, they can be built pretty much all at one time, or is that kind of phased in over a couple of years?
It's a little bit under, in motion, but hopefully we'll get 11 units done within a year and a half, starting about the middle of the summer.
So like, at what point do you reach the greater than 50 ADT? At what point do you figure the whole road's gonna be paved?
Hopefully it'll be paved well before those houses are even, before those treehouses are done, because the infrastructure will be done. Again, all we're trying to do is avoid the heavy trucks on the pavement.
And I can go back to the stormwater exemption. So the exceptions to the standard, which is the flooding control standards, you can request the exemption if all downstream drainage ways have the capacity and stability to receive the project's runoff, plus any off-site runoff also passing through the system and drainage movements are secured. And they have to potentially provide the measurements that they did in their stormwater analysis for a 50-year and 100-year 24-hour storm. And if there are no health and safety issues posed, the flooding of primary access routes to the project and public roads are undue burden to property owners likely to suffer specific harm. Staff through TRT has established that the improvements that they are making for their own stormwater and the natural streamways that exist together, based off of their stormwater report, did not cause a safety hazard, so no undue safety hazards.
And the fact that it's a, the fact that it is a flooded road at the 100-year flood won't affect your insurance or anything for those other units, right? I mean, in other words, you, you don't have to have flood insurance for the unit because it's out of the 100-year flood plain, but that doesn't affect the access.
I don't think it'll affect the insurance on the unit, but it may affect our overall insurance. I'm not, I don't know the answer to that at this point.
Should be aware.
I have a question about, back to the road discussion for a second. If you're going to start to open this up for rental people, you know, relatively soon in phase one, how does the not developing the rest of the road affect that?
It's a good question. At that point, it will just be gravel. So we are gonna maintain that and keep that in good condition. But keep it gravel so that it doesn't get destroyed. That's, that's all, all that's happening there.
So if in section four, I have access, if I were renting, I'd have access over a decent road to that point.
Yeah.
And just to catch up, Vince, the only portion of Old Mill Way that has, or the only portion of the property has to be, probably paved, is Old Mill Way. Because the rest of the side roads in the back all feed onto that part of the road at some point to take it over the 50, 80 average daily trips. But each, so the back portion of the property and all the side roads do create that 50 average daily trip so they can remain gravel, or they're requesting the waiver to keep them gravel.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
And in the past, we had discussions of what if any improvements are made to the public portion of Old Mill Road? Is that, is there gonna be improvements to that road between the city and the developer?
Yeah, so there's, we don't have the formal agreement done yet, so it will be a request as a condition of approval, but we have come to an agreement on how that will occur. So the city will lay out the, the public portion of Old Mill Way ready to be paved. And then when the developer comes through to pave their portion of the private road, they'll also pave the public road. And so that Old Mill Road, the public portion, will be paved after that fact.
Okay, so basically the city does the preparation and the developer is paying for the,
The pay.
The public portion of the road to be paved, is it?
Yes.
Okay. Sounds like a good agreement.
Reasonable even. Reasonable.
Yeah.
Imagine.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. Any other questions? You don't have any more, Mike? We don't?
We have some more.
Okay. Anybody else? I will open this for a public hearing if anybody has any comments or questions. It looks like there may be a question.
There is. We're just deciding which one of us is gonna make it.
You can go up together and then decide.
We can both go.
There, you see that?
Please give us your names, please.
Yeah. Peter McDevitt, I'm the northern landowner, a butter. And curious how close your last house is to the property line?
Which property line exactly?
Your northern one, upriver.
Last two houses, the, the two last ones in the basement.
If you, is it okay if they come over here and see? Because it's hard to describe.
Because on the map that you sent, it looks like that house is sitting on the line.
No, so this dash line here around the edge represents the 20-foot setback that's required. So it's like the house will be just slightly more than 20 feet setback from the property line. So this dash line here is the setback line, yeah.
So, question. These are short-term rentals. On the other side of that 20 feet is our property, where, you know, the kids hunt, we walk our dogs. How are you gonna keep short-term renters out of our area? Is there a fence? Is there something?
We're definitely open to lots of options. We may end up putting a fence there.
Okay.
Because that one is so close. But if we did put a fence in, we'd want to talk to you first about...
Yeah, absolutely. We'd appreciate that.
Some people don't like fences.
And we don't necessarily want a fence. I was actually hoping this was like, somebody was gonna live there. You know, I understand short-term rentals. We stay in short-term rentals. Sometimes they're not respectful of neighbors' property. And that's kind of our concern with that house being so close to that line.
Yeah, that line is actually really easy to see because of the whole logging road that's been put in there.
Okay.
And so we will demarcate very carefully the boundary of the property to keep people in and to keep people out. So people know what's the property and where it's not. We haven't finalized how we're gonna do that at this point, but there'll definitely be signs. And then maybe possibly a road that goes all around, just to say, you know, a soft sort of, don't look here at this point.
We can have conversations about things.
I mean, like you said, we like to hunt there. There's a tree stand.
Overlooking this.
Very close to the house.
Well, now you have 15 tree stands.
Think of it that way, right? Really posh, really posh tree stand.
You have a couple extra targets, too.
I'll have to move that, because I'll have to be 500 feet from that, so, or 300 feet.
300.
300, yeah. So, okay.
Yeah. And maybe we could talk afterwards and change numbers, because we'd love to hear from you about your concerns.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm glad to get this chance to meet you.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, seriously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on Zoom? Okay, so I will close the public hearing. Any other questions from the board or comments from the staff?
I just want to make a comment. I think it's, I think it's very, um, very great of you to be able to work with a budding property owner and vice versa. I think that's, I mean, that's how things get done, is just by communication. And if you can get it done, awesome. I think that's great. I think that's great.
Yeah, we see a lot of
Very philosophical.
methods and attitudes here. This is probably the better of the types that we see.
This development team's very communication-forward, so staff has appreciated that as well.
Yes.
I would have to say right from the get-go, I mean, you've provided more information on this project than I've seen on pretty much any other project.
Yeah, if you come back with another one, just smushed up, provide, provide bags with them, would you?
Or, or maybe a reduced scale, just a suggestion.
Okay, there's some, so there's some staff comments and conditions. So, I mean, going forward, we need three, Matt, three waivers and then Nelson said, a condition of approval for the DEP approval for shoreline zoning?
Uh, yes. So we'll do, let's vote on, we should vote on the waivers first, just do them one at a time.
Okay.
And then now we can go into the conditions after that.
So we're gonna do separate motions for each?
Yeah.
Okay. Ready?
Yeah.
Or not?
Yeah, I just want to, what do you want for, just waiver for the width of the rock bridge on the property? Do we need to have what the size is, or?
Yeah, so I just, the language I already use is motion to grant a waiver for the width of the, we'll call the road replacing the previous, the existing... of the, we'll call the road replacing the previous, the existing rock bridge, say eighteen feet with two foot shoulders.
You know what would be good, that, that I think counsel is afforded, is?
Draft language?
Yes.
Sorry.
Were you reading from something?
No, I just, I mean, I read from the TRT report, but made the rest up.
So the recommended motion.
And made the rest up.
So you wanna try that one?
No. That, that was, that was what's-his-name's thing, and he went to counsel, so.
Can't even remember his name.
I can take a stab.
Any more discussion, though, before we get into?
Nope. Anything we're done?
Make a motion that we grant the waiver for the width of the rock bridge to be eighteen foot plus two foot shoulders on the property.
Do we need to have a, what the distance of that is, or just?
Because it's specifically labeled on the plan, I think it's okay to leave it.
Or make a reference.
Or make reference, yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in paper. Okay, next waiver. For the paving schedule until?
Yeah, I think in the morning.
You gonna do this one?
Yeah. Motion to grant the waiver for exception to the paving schedule until the greater than fifty ADT is reached.
Second. All in paper.
Motion to grant the exemption from elsewhere stormwater standards found in section one zero zero three dot three B three.
Second.
All in paper. And condition of approval should be in the motion to.
Yes.
Check the final plan.
And so the, I think the only condition you really need to grant is the one that's listed in the TRT report that the project will receive main DEP approval for shoreline zoning before permits are issued for phases two through four.
The first bullet in that section, by final, need a letter from a historic, is that, is that in here?
That, that is, that should've been crossed.
So this is the last one. Is everybody all set?
You might as well do the, do the final.
Yeah, it's like a clean sweep.
This has been a journey.
It's time to grow up there, gradhopper.
I mean, this whole application process, luxury treehouses and the story and all the thing.
So Nelson, you're just doing a motion to?
Yeah, I'm gonna do the motion to approve the, basically the gen item, and then I'm gonna suffix it with the. Move to approve the final plan review for a major use site development and major subdivision entitled Old Mill Property Development for applicant Tim Stone and owner Arbor House Properties LLC. The proposal to create a seventeen-lot major subdivision, phases two through four of the project, will consist of twelve dwelling units. And the remaining construction of the roadways and subject property is an approximate twenty-nine point nine acre lot located at thirty Old Mill Road, tax map forty-one, lot fifty-three in the neighborhood, limited residential and urban zoning districts. This is on the condition that the project will receive a main DEP approval for shoreline zoning before build permits are issued for phases two through four.
Second. All in paper. Thank you. Thank you. I guess we're done?
You did? Feel a little bad, but I'll get over it again. The good news is that I am back, leaving this behind.
Elizabeth is gonna break her arm.
See, maybe you wanna be working through two boxes. I was gonna say, working through two mornings.
I even rolled mine up for you, so you could have it.
Take a picture of the label for the point that, the point of the property setback, it's labeled here, but.
Awesome, thank you so much.
I'll pass my, yeah, I'll pass out the paper ones for them.
See ya. This is why it's been pushed over here. Once it gets to the final, and if it was preliminary, you should probably keep it till the next time, but final is final. Unless, of course, you need fire starter material. Yeah, so fortunately, we wanna keep the, probably wanna keep the Fields Avenue thing.
Bring up the full-size copies.
Thank you, Thomas.
They all squared away on, screwed your asses in. Okay, number five, final plan review revision to existing subdivision entitled Fifty-Nine Franklin for applicant Corey Wiegan. I think I got that right?
Perfect.
Okay. Only after half a dozen meetings. An owner Fifty-Nine Franklin LLC. The proposal is to construct two dwelling units on a lot with an existing structure subdivision. The subject property is approximately zero point two seven eight acre lot located at Fifty-Nine Franklin, act map one thirty-four, lot thirty-three, in the downtown zoning district. Again, Nelson asked on the last one, we have two new members, so we'll just briefly kinda catch them up to what we've done.
Yep, first, should we correct that this is actually for three dwelling units?
Oh, yes, the agenda had gone out prior, so there should be a vote on the agenda, I apologize, to turn this from two dwelling units to three dwelling units, because of the commercial space that was gonna be commercials, now it's dwelling unit.
Okay.
Uh, make motion, we update the agenda item number five, final plan review for revision. Second sentence should be adjusted to construct three dwelling units rather than two.
So you made that a motion?
Yes.
All in paper. Okay, so the original storefront of the original restaurant is not gonna be in the park?
Correct.
Or dwelling unit. Okay.
So, little background for the members that weren't here previously, it's a two-phase project, phase one was previously approved, which is the north wing, the former restaurant space, was approved for three dwelling units, the units that are typical one-bedroom, one-bath. This phase is considering the south wing and the storefront. The storefront will be a dwelling unit, but the south wing is basically a duplex with two dwelling units. Within each dwelling unit is a suite of rooms sharing a kitchen.
Okay, and so I see that, I say Larry Gardner won the battle on.
That is correct. Fifty-eight Water Street is the second address for this building.
So for the, for the new members, even though this is one building, we have some parts of it that you can only access from Franklin Street, which will have an address of Fifty-Nine Franklin Street, and then one F, one A, et cetera. And the unit's on the backside, and the one downstairs, I believe there's one downstairs, or no, the upstairs.
The entrance is downstairs.
The back upstairs unit enters from Water Street.
Correct.
So those are all gonna be fifty-six, fifty-eight, fifty-eight Water, two E, D, whatever. And that's apparently Larry's final answer.
Yes, that is correct.
So I'm sorry, level three accesses from Water Street?
No, level. So unit on the top right, that's labeled on the plan, Fifty-eight Water Street, two A, has a staircase within the unit. On the west corner.
I see it, thank you.
Yeah, that is level two, but it exits down through level one to Water Street side.
Now, we're talking about Fifty-eight Water, two A, I mean, like, last time, Mike, you had concerns about that stairway.
Yeah, that, I believe if you look at the plans, the, the smaller set of plans we have, I believe showed that he has that enclosed, correct?
On the lower level, yes, not within the dwelling unit itself.
Right, there's a door at the base of the stairs.
Correct.
Yeah, door, base of stairs, and that, the shaft basically is protecting.
The commercial space, Ellsworth America.
Yeah, commercial space from that stair enclosure.
Yes, and we've already verified it, it's already type X, five A's drywall, so.
So that passes, is your muster?
Yeah, I think, as far as I'm concerned, I think that's fine, so long as we can verify that, which we have, so. The, the only question I have for you, Tom, is Sprinkler Systems, Inc. is requesting a waiver for section, chapter six, six point six point one, and that has to do with multiple-story buildings, as far as individual floor control valves. You've got two more, two or more stories?
So that would be a fire marshal request for waiver, not for me, because I don't do the review for the sprinklers.
Well, that's part of your ordinance, though. That's something you'd have to take a look at, because the fire marshal wouldn't do that.
Okay, I will.
So it's at six point six point one.
I haven't, yeah, I, I, the only thing I know is when I was talking to Sprinklers, it was, is that they're taking on the project, he's working on the plans, and once I had the plans, I was gonna, I was gonna review further into it.
Okay.
But you can, if you would like, to make it a condition of approval, or just have it as that I will address it after the fact, once I have the sprinkler plans, to see what they're actually trying to remove from the plans.
So the condition would be prior to issuing a permit, fire, like, safety inspector has to receive and review the full sprinkler plans?
No, I just need, I just need, I just need to review the, the section that they're talking about for the waiver, which can, I can do tomorrow, if that, if that is a concern for the board, if that's what they're.
Yeah, that's what they're actually asking. Basically, what, if I, if I may explain a little bit, what's happened with this is that in, in multiple-story buildings, each story is protected with a sprinkler, sprinkler system. What happens with that is that in, in some of the older buildings, if the sprinkler goes off on the second floor, and they need to repair it or do something, they need to shut off every floor, and thus, the entire building is up without sprinkler protection. This part of the ordinance says that instead of being able to do, instead of doing that, all you need to do is shut off the second floor, and the rest of the building stays protected. What they're asking for is a waiver to remove that extra control, so that basically, if they shut the system off, the whole building goes off. But that's something that he would have to take a look at.
So I think you just volunteered to be the one to make the motion with the condition?
Yeah, I think it would be, I don't know how to make a motion.
As I said, dress offer, it's time to.
You've been promoted.
I love this, it's like a change of the guard or something, right?
One thing I was kinda curious about on the, there's two letters from Reggie Winslow, and one references sufficient water to supply the proposed eleven hundred fifty-five gallons per day, and then the second one talks about, has sufficient water available for the proposed fifteen hundred thirty gallons per day calculation from subsurface wastewater disposal. It kinda sounds like you're gonna have eleven hundred fifty-five gallons of water, but you're gonna have fifteen hundred thirty gallons of wastewater?
So I see, his first letter there is not dated, that's the original letter, and that specifically I included because it speaks of the sprinkler system, where his updated letter from February fifteenth doesn't mention the sprinklers. So yes, from phase one to phase two, our calculations for usage did change, and the new fifteen thirty gallons per day is for phase two.
Obviously, there's enough water, I'm just curious about the difference.
No.
Somehow you were.
No, I mean, I understand what Corey did, I actually kinda agree with it, just 'cause it specifically mentions sprinklers, and I brought it up in TRT, but Reggie confirmed that there's still enough water for the sprinkler system and the usage.
So you increasing the domestic water line size from three-quarter inch to, or you leaving it the same?
Uh, that's a consideration here that the plumber and contractor will decide. Reggie made that recommendation to look at that, which we will.
Okay. So I'm just kinda curious from a staff point of view, what did we decide to end up calling these? Because we kinda struggled with what they are.
Right, we don't have a great definition, they should, like in other places, they'd be called like a co-living, you know, facility or something like that, which Ellsworth doesn't have a definition for, but they're going as bed and breakfast units right now.
So is that a note to self, or?
That's a thing you'll see later down the road.
Any questions?
I just have one. I'm confused, nothing new about that. But who do you envision taking residence in these places there? It's bed and breakfast, is that correct?
Well, that's under the law ordinance, yes, that's what we're running it as.
It's the thing that's the most, the best definition to fit what these are.
Yeah, so if I rent a bed and breakfast, now, maybe it's different for other people, but I expect to have, not be sharing kitchens and baths and so on, it sounds more, almost like a dormitory in this context.
Right, and so, so the co-living situation would be a better name for it, but we don't, Ellsworth doesn't have a definition for a co-living situation, but there is a requirement in our bed and breakfast definition of providing meals or that sort of thing. I guess Corey can speak to the types of renting that'll go on in the units for you, but if a dwelling, all it needs to be a bed and breakfast is a dwelling unit with suites or rooms for rent within it. Does that answer the question, or are you looking for?
I think so, yeah. Thank you.
I mean, it is very similar to adjacent to college campuses these days, where you're kinda renting by the room.
Right.
Yeah. Where's the campus?
It's gotta be a satellite campus in the mall.
I think it's one of the main malls, if there's compared campus or something.
The mall.
Mall Mall. As you know, I'm not very good at, it's been a bad day.
Any other questions from the staff?
Staff, definitely.
And other question for staff?
Uh, there's, there's one, well, there's at least one, not cost-out item here on the TRT, front window for one A covered for privacy, there was a request for some, to get some detail on, on how that would be handled.
I'm not sure that that's relevant. I mean, if you have ideas of how you're gonna do it, just. Typically, that's kind of responsibility, but any units we do, we just put up hooks, and it's their responsibility, if they want. To put our work in the wall, curtains, blankets, it's up to them, but we provide the attachments on the wall, and that's the extent of it.
That's something that's worthwhile for future discussion as well, as we see more conversions of previously commercial spaces into residential spaces.
Specifically like privacy.
Like if you have a giant twelve-foot glass window on your side of your living room facing the street?
Yeah.
What would you do about that? Might be worth talking about or thinking about.
Well, I will open the public hearing. Nobody on Zoom? Open the public hearing?
Yeah. See, we can, say this, add that, hold on.
So easy.
This is, this is. I know, I don't want you to. Tick, dot.
Huh?
So, I guess basically, make a motion that we approve the final plan review, revision of the existing subdivision. So, I guess, basically, make a motion that we approve the final plan review revision of the existing subdivision entitled fifty-nine Franklin for applicant Corey Wigan. And owner fifty-nine Franklin LLC. The proposal is to construct two dwelling units.
Three.
Three, excuse me, three dwelling units on a lot with an existing structure subdivision. Subject property is an approximately zero point two seven acre lot located at fifty-nine Franklin Street. Tax map one thirty-four, lot thirty-three, in the downtown zoning district. With the condition that the section of chapter four, the fire prevention ordinance, six point six point one, um, request for waiver would be approved by the Ellsworth Fire Department.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion?
That's pretty cool.
All in favor? You're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, you're not done yet, Mark.
Yeah, we got staff. Arries and stuff.
I'll go with your comments quick.
Bye, nice to see you again.
Um, I'll keep it to a comp plan update for Mark's sake. So, uh, the comprehensive plan, uh, we're currently moving into the policy and recommendations phase. Staff has reviewed them, they'll now be heading out to public comment, um, engagement to the subcommittee process, which will take place the last week of March and the first week of April. More actually happening before, now and before that, um, is the public engagement with the vision statement that's been developed by the compliance steering committee. Um, you can provide comment digitally or physical locations around the city, um, there'll be some drop boxes and stuff you can fill out the survey or it's online, um, and will be promoted through, um, the city's social media and on the website. And, yeah, people, hopefully you all go take a look at the first set now, and then later in the month attend the, uh, subcommittee meetings. Except for you two are required to, so, at least two of them.
We'll see.
But I'll leave it at that.
Good work, thank you.
And just one quick one, I happen to know that, I'm, I'm guessing it'll be in the print edition of the Ellsworth American, but apparently the state has decided to go forward on purchasing a piece of property out on the Surrey Road for new courthouse.
So you read the paper? Yes, they did purchase a piece of property, um, on the Surrey Road, the project is still quite a long ways out, but, um, with our discussions with them, the construction of is a little ways out. Um, but our discussion with them, they will be coming to you for a presentation against the state, so they do not have to follow all plan board's rules, but they want to have a public hearing and meeting on it, so they'll be coming to present that project to you.
I was kind of wondering if they were actually encompassing planning board, if they're required, or it's the state and they just kind of do what they want to do.
Yeah, they're not, they're not required, but they acquiesce to the requests that they do come and present.
Well, I happen to notice, one of the people they quoted was, we've been in touch with the planning board all along.
Just the planning department.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
What's the timeline on that?
I don't know exactly, but the construction is probably like two years total.
Yeah, because I think, I don't think they've actually even got the funding for the construction itself.
There's still a little ways out.
It's a piece of property just before, on the same side of the road as Josie's.
Yep.
That where Ralph Bennett used to live.
Take your word for it.
Knows who I'm talking about.
So I have a comment, I was wondering, Nate, can you come in here a minute? Um, we had several comments today from, from our, um, uh, public hearing that people can't hear.
I recommend hearing aids.
So the idea is, we had several comments from people can't, not being able to hear. Has the city entertained the idea, and this is not really planning board stuff, of, uh, having hearing impaired devices available for people like that? I know.
Though, while years ago, we had a discussion before, we had other meetings, um, that had a lot of people that have come, um, we do have some in-room audio, but we normally have a lot of issues with back feeding issues. So we haven't really turned it up, because what happens is halfway you get to the meeting, you get all this squeaking, and it just creates more problems than it really helps, so. Uh, but yes, no, there's definitely, um, options that would be available, just more or less budgeting, you know, those options, so.
I was gonna say, because I know at, at our church, we had, we went that way, and it's just, it's something that just clips on the ear, and it's just a small little thing, it's just a wireless.
A mic pack, it's like those museum things that you get when you're taking a tour or whatever.
This is not even, it's not even like that, I mean, you can, and a person can provide their own headphones if they want to with the right jack, but I, I think something needs to be addressed. Especially when we've got, I mean, how many people couldn't hear what was going on? At least four today.
And one, there is one other option too, I mean, uh, citizens can, our Facebook, or excuse me, our YouTube feed is like behind like not even one second or so. So if they wanted to put earbuds in and have YouTube on their phone at the same time, they could have it, it'd just be the label's fit. I mean, that, that's an option now, but, yeah, totally, I mean, that could be a discussion that, uh, of course, Jason does the budgeting in our department, so we have to talk to Jason about, uh, those options, so.
What about even arrangement of the seats? I mean, if you had these two tables going that way, that might make it easier for others, I don't know. I mean, it would be awkward, I mean, this is clearly the better way to do it, right?
Well, another thing we have to consider is also camera arrangement in the room.
Right.
And how, how we play when we do the broadcast. So, uh, we, it can be done, but I mean, we can be creative, we just have to think it through, so.
But I mean, the mic at the podium, I mean, that amplified, I remember when Carol Spencer was talking.
Yeah, so, so tip, so how this, how it's kind of worked is on the mixer, this part of the room is split in one, one side, and this part of the room is split on the other side. So like anybody talking here going forward, so you don't get the feedback, is not broadcast as much over those rear speakers, because you would think you're closer to the people in the back of the room, you shouldn't need that application. Where in the front, the front is amplified louder over the speakers than right here, so that's why.
So these, these speakers actually come through the speaker in the back?
Oh, in the back, yeah. Yep, yep. That, that was the goal when we had the, the company come in and add the speakers and the amplifier and stuff, but being at such a small room, and being that we like, having, you have that distance on the microphones, if we're not miked up close, and turning the levels down, you start getting that feedback, because the mics are turned up for sensitivities, so they can hear you, since they're so far, so.
I agree, I thi- I think it's worth talking about, though.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, the, the age demographics, I think, are well-known by everybody here, and half of the audience said they couldn't hear us tonight.
Yeah.
They bothered to come out, and they usually don't, so.
Because actually, hasn't, hasn't the police department had an issue with someone locally that, that has contacted the police department who needs deaf interpreters and, I mean, they've taken. Quite an issue dealing with it, I mean, I mean, by law, they have to provide that service.
I'll, I'll be honest, I was about to try and turn up the speakers, but I was like, I don't know if I want to, uh, full.
Experiment between meetings.
Well, and that's just it, if, if, um.
Try, try it during a council meeting.
So, uh, so, yeah, no, definitely, I'll, I'll pass it on to Jason and, um.
Well, it's probably an ADA, almost an ADA compliance thing, right?
Not that severe.
No?
We have mics and speakers around, yeah.
Yeah, just saying. Just trying to be the voice of the people here.
Well, it's not that we can't look into it, I just don't think we're not complying with law or something.
Well, I couldn't hear a thing all evening.
You're old.
Was that mic, was that on tape?
Ouch.
Good for you.
But actually, all, I mean, all joking aside, um, we don't do this for us, we do this for the people that sit over there.
That's right.
Right? That, that, they are the point of this entire operation, all this apparatus, so we, it should work for them, right? Else, why are we here?
Staff, yeah, like, staff will look into it, uh, some options.
Well, and then we may, like I say, we may have to change up the miking strategy too, that may be something where you might have to maybe wear a mic, or we have to make sure the mics are close, so that we don't run into those feedback issues, so we can turn the levels down, so. Um, just to let you know, you might have that, the convenience of sitting, reclining in your chairs might go away because of that, because being able to make it all work. Because I mean, honestly, if we were to enforce microphone usage so things are closer, we might be able to make everything work the way it is.
Like a lapel, like a lapel mic?
Well, no, even just using these mics to just make sure you're only speaking like this far away from it, we can turn, turn the mic level down, which would reduce the chance of having that feedback I was talking about.
Well, the big, the big issue was hearing these guys, it seemed, as opposed to us.
Or failing.
Well, but still, we'd have to have your mics up.
But in other line of the saying.
Still be a feedback loop chance, so, yeah, yeah, either way, yeah, so, I mean, it's either or, like I said, we can tweak on this, but there's other those things you have to consider that, uh, you'd have to be more cognizant about mic placement and things.
And you know, we are in the presence of the indoor city manager.
Oh, who's that?
He controls the purse strings, huh?
Exactly.
I do not control them, but I can put input in them.
So, anyway, yes, I will pass it on.
Good, thank you.
Anything else you need?
Nope. We all, any other comments? Most prefer German?
German, please.
We're good. Thanks.